Good afternoon and welcome to the GMSD Board Budget, excuse me, GMSD Board of Education Budget and Work Session. April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five at approximately two oh four P M. Calling this particular meeting to order. This is kind of our, our annual first look, touch, talk, uh, where we see, received the presentation of the, um, annual budget by department. On behalf of the district office and everyone that participates in that process through, um, then the superintendent, uh, Mr. Kathy and, and Mr. Jones. We really appreciate everyone's, a lot of work goes into this and, um, been a lot of, uh, late nights and a lot of, um, asking people within the district. You know, getting feedback and I think that that's, uh, being such a significant employer of choice, that's, that's very significant. But also understanding the needs, um, in the school buildings and, and what, what people, families and staff and students are all looking for as well. Everything that, um, you'll see here and, and hear about today. I think a lot of times you'll hear us talk about the revenue streams and sources. Probably gonna really talk about what's coming from where, uh, a, a lot more. Um, and I'm so thankful, a couple of years ago. Uh, the finance team took our strategic plan and budget and married them in a way that makes it so digestible and user friendly for the community. To be able to see what's tied to what as far as, uh, anything that's coming in or, or expenses and, um, investments that are going out. And how those tie to what we do day in and day out, kind of philosophically, which is what this group of people here at this table do is determine. Kind of the, the planning for, um, you know, the future. And, uh, it's one of my favorite days of the year. I think y'all have heard me say that before. But for people that we have in the audience, we want to thank you for coming in. For those that may listen, I'm gonna really promote this, this discussion after we're complete today. Out into the community. Um, and so I hope that this will help everybody hear the first, uh, kind of presentation. And then maybe prompt some discussion and, and questions and conversation in the community. And that's the part of it. This is just the first, the first kind of mention of everything. And anyone that has questions, I highly encourage you to reach out to, uh, the, the Board of Education. Mr. Manuel, number one on the agenda. Here we are in GMSD fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, general fund budget summary highlights.
Great. I'll kick us off. And as always, we want this to be a conversation. So, um, I'll tell you if you're premature in something, say, hello, we're about to get to that. Um, but please ask your questions as we go. Uh, we're gonna highlight the big changes from last year's budget to this year's budget. And remember, we're talking about our general operating budget. Uh, in May, there's a separate budget that we're looking at or several budgets that we're looking at. Whether we're talking about our insurance, uh, we're talking about our cafeteria, our federal programs. Those are much, much smaller budgets for us. But those come at a later time because we're waiting on the projections for revenue for those, those items. So let's dig into what are the big changes that we see, uh, coming? And if you'll follow along and you can see on the screen here, I got some highlights, but these all go along with what we're talking about in the, in the budget documents that you received. So first, let's talk about the, what are the big highlights? What are we gonna talk to our teachers about? What are we gonna talk to our community about? What are the things that we're proud that we have been able to accomplish? Um, well, first, we are seeing an increase in some revenues. Uh, mainly the TISA funding and also we, uh, are projecting more from outcomes. So as you know, with the TISA funding model, the governor said that, uh, we have to by the end of, not this coming year, but the year after that, that next fiscal year. The starting teacher salary has to be fifty thousand dollars. And so as they were planning for that, the, uh, Department of Education has been giving more additional funding. Every single year to reach that goal. And so that's why over the past several years, we've seen a COLA every single year for our teacher staff to increase their pay. Uh, so there is about nine hundred thousand dollars additional funding, uh, from the Department of Education for those teacher salaries. We also see, uh, and we're projecting about five hundred thousand dollars in outcomes because our students do perform well on our test. Um, we think that's a conservative, uh, estimate. We do have an individual, Mr. Legault, who tracks that and tracks the different student weights. Uh, just so you know, this past year, the, the outcomes was over seven hundred thousand dollars. So we think projecting about five hundred thousand is a conservative measure for, um, that revenue stream. We also see one point two million, uh, reductions in operating costs, a one point seven million, uh, increase in teacher salaries. A hundred and eighty-eight thousand in changes in compensation and a couple of new positions. And then other staff, we see a three percent COLA added and steps. And we'll talk about each of these as we go through each of these categories. But those are the big highlights for these budget. Those are the big changes that you see, uh, coming for the district. So now we're gonna dig in a little bit more into each of those areas. So let's talk about our projected enrollment. As you know, with the TISA funding formula, it's now based on the number of students that you, you have for the state funding. And they provide weights depending on the types of students. So, uh, we have projected, uh, fifty-nine hundred students. We think it's gonna be over that. We think we may hit fifty-nine eighty, but once again, we, we try to be conservative as we are, uh, developing the budget. And so we don't want, um, a change of thirty, forty students to dramatically have an impact on our budget. Uh, once again, with the revenue adjustments with the TISA funding, we are projecting an increase of one point four million. And we've had our first, uh, forms coming from the Department of Education saying to, to expect that, especially around the increase in pay, uh, for teacher salaries. And then we have, uh, reduced expenditures by one point two million dollars. And we'll talk about where that occurs in this budget. So those are the big changes and how we're gonna create the things that we're excited about. So let's talk about the budget reductions first. So in the Board of Education budget, there are two main, um, large reductions that you see. Uh, the first, and this is something that's on our work session agenda, in order for us to budget and make ends meet and balance all this. Uh, I'm requesting that we go ahead and pay off, uh, Memphis Shelby County Schools, the last payment, uh, for OPEB. You know, that was one of the agreements in the settlement agreement that we have three hundred and fifty-five thousand that we are paying them a year. So it's my recommendation to go ahead and pay that out of our reserve, um, be done with that so that we can use that to make some of these salary adjustments for our staff. The second one, and this is one, Mr. Curry, that we were talking about with the actuaries that we've been expecting for a long time. We have been fully funding retiree benefits for our, our employees. So just like any good government entity. You plan for those, uh, promises that you have, those OPEB, other post-employment benefits. So if we tell, uh, staff that we're gonna provide them health insurance in their retirement, we've been fully funding that all along. And that number has been decreasing. We knew that was gonna go down. We have been fully funding it. So we didn't see a balloon payment. So I think when we first started, we were close to eight hundred thousand in our OPEB payments that we were making. Now that is down and actuaries are saying that we're down to about five hundred thousand dollars for that OPEB payment. So it's, it went down by about two hundred thousand dollars. So that's a huge benefit for us. We're finally reaping those benefits of fully funding our OPEB, um, benefits for our staff. Other changes that we see reductions, uh, in our transportation budget, uh, we are playing a reduction of two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Based on what we have been paying, uh, Durham and our transportation, uh, budget. So we, we think with the efficiencies in routing and the penalties that we typically get, that, uh, that is once again, a conservative estimate of what we're going to spend. And then finally, uh, we have reduced the capital improvement budgets by four hundred and sixty-five, uh, thousand dollars of general fund dollars. Uh, this doesn't take into account county funding that we receive when we get our, our portion of the county funding or any other funding that we have for capital improvements. So those are the big reductions. When you look at, and we're gonna dive into each of the revenues, let's talk about some of the changes in our revenues. So as you know, um, it's difficult financial times, uh, and we typically do with all budgeting, you know, a lot of this is not guessing. It is educated planning on what we think we're going to generate from taxes. But when we're talking about how much are people going to buy and what is our sales tax going to be, we wanna be careful that if we think there could be a recession or we could be, see reductions in spending. That could have an impact on our budget. That's one of the reasons we have to make sure that we maintain a reserve. That's one of the reasons that we have to ma- make sure that we're budgeting conservatively. Cause if we see reductions in sales tax, that would have an, uh, impact on our operating budget. So we are planning to see a reduction in sales tax of two hundred and four, uh, thousand dollars. And you'll see that reflected. We are once again expecting an increase in one point four million from the state. And we are seeing an increase in other local revenue of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And that comes from a mix of different, uh, taxes. But if y'all had any questions on that, we, we gladly answer questions about general fund rev- revenues. Okay, let's move on to our reserve. Uh, I think there's been a lot of talk recently about our reserve and what we spend our, our money on. And I think people have, need to understand essentially how our budget works and, and what we do. So the F, this budget that we have does plan to use, just like last year's budget, uh, we are planning for two point three million in reserves. Uh, to cover some of our expenditures in, in this budget. Um, so we have done that, like I said, over the past couple of years. And even planning that, we have been able to move, uh, additional money into our reserve. And once again, how does that happen? When we see extra money for outcomes. So we saw some extra outcome money come from the state this year because, uh, we had more than half of our schools were a schools. So we got additional funding. We don't plan for that so that we can, uh, deal with contingencies or, or, uh, deal with capital needs that we have. We make sure that, uh, we don't budget for those dollars. So we have seen an increase, uh, in those funds in our reserve funds over the past couple of years. So at the end of last fiscal year, I think we were looking at twenty-four million. We were probably twenty-two when we were starting, um, the district. But let's talk about how our reserve works. And this was a big discussion at the beginning of the district. If you think about when you pay your property taxes, everyone's paying their property taxes from December to February. That's when the money comes to the school district. Fifty percent of our funding is coming from that money. So we have to have a way to pay our employees, to pay for our people, um, to pay all the bills, utility costs that are happening. Really from the beginning of our fiscal year in July until December, when we start seeing those property taxes come in for us. So at the beginning of the district, we actually had to have an eight million dollar, they, they called it a, a RAN. It was a loan, a revenue anticipatory note. To pay our bills until we started seeing some of that funding, uh, come in. So for us and as a school district, we will always have to, and, and as our expenditures increase, of course, this amount would increase. But if the expenditure stayed the same for the next fifty years, we are always gonna have to have ten million dollars in our reserve. Uh, in order to, to manage that cash flow to pay our bills. Now, what do we need also? And this, I think the city keeps this same amount of funding. We also need about four million dollars and, and I think it's just good, uh, conservative, uh, spending for emergency needs. So we're gonna talk about today, the challenges that our insurance account has faced, uh, this past year and some of the changes we need to make. But when we see claims higher than what we budgeted, where's the money to pay for, because we are self-insured to pay for those insurance claims? That comes out of our reserve. That's one of the ways that we, we pay for that. We offset those. So I think any good organization not only needs to have their money for their cash flow. But you also need to have money, um, in case of emergencies. And I think, uh, perfect example, we talked about this today, um, during our cabinet meeting was in Tipton County. When they had the tornado hit their school and they've been operating, uh, essentially out of a large tent for, for two of their schools. How are they paying for that? Because they had trouble, trouble getting reimbursements. They had disputes over the insurance claims. It, it's been a real struggle. They had to really use their reserves to do that. So for us to, to keep, um, a four million dollar, uh, amount for emergencies, I think that's important. Especially when you're talking about a eighty million dollar operating budget, that, that's not a huge amount of money that you're keeping for those needs. Now, what are we planning and what is this board discussed with the other amounts of, of reserve? Um, we have already talked about one point two million that we have approved for the Houston High Ceiling Tile and Grid. And remember that is a phase one project for us. Uh, this summer, um, because it's a lot of the, it's the original grid and a lot of the tiles are, if, if you go in there, it's, uh, a patchwork of old tiles. And where they tried to replace with new tiles, but we are redoing that and the, the lighting and the, the wiring. Because, um, as you know, the devices that we have in that school and the infrastructure we need, uh, needs to be updated. So that is just phase one. And as we discussed that project, uh, that was, uh, some main areas in the lobby, the auditor, the main lobby, the auditorium lobby. And the upstairs area, that's gonna be completed this summer. But we also have, um, the phase two, which we plan for next fiscal year. That's projected to be about another one point two million dollars to do the downstairs area of ceiling, tile and grid. Uh, so those are already projects that were on our deferred maintenance plan, our five-year deferred maintenance plan, and also on the Houston High, um, plan that we had. So know that those projects are planned, uh, out of reserve. Uh, we are also planning to, to use one million. And that's one of the discussions we're gonna have for our health insurance, um, account. And as we start talking about our health insurance. We were so proud and, and we really have done an incredible job because we're self-insured with our health insurance. Our rates have stayed the same for teachers for eleven years. They have not gone up. That is an incredible benefit for our teachers who are, and staff who are serving our children. But we knew going in to last year, we had to shore up that account. I think we put in nine hundred thousand dollars to make it through the end of last year. We're, we're gonna have to do the same this year, put in money to make it to the end of the year, knowing that next year, we're gonna have to look at changing our rates and also looking at, um, what the district is putting in. So for us, looking at our reserve, that's one of our needs that we're going to have, um, for our, our budget. Uh, once again, to balance this budget, we're looking at going ahead and, and paying off Memphis Shelby County Schools for that last payment of three hundred and fifty-five thousand. We've also talked about Farmington Elementary School. Uh, we have two schools that still have modular classrooms. Um, those are portables that we have set up. And we've talked about going to brick and mortar solutions. And so, um, we have planned approximately five point five million for that project. Uh, five hundred thousand, we plan for Riverdale renovations there. Uh, and so you can see, those are the things we've already discussed. We've also discussed, uh, Dogwood's portable replacement. And these are just estimates of what we would spend out of the reserve of three million. Once again, I talked about phase two of Houston High School Ceiling Tile and Grid. Um, health insurance costs of one point two million, we're gonna talk about that. Uh, and then three million suggested for, and I think we need to talk about. The struggles that we are having, uh, on our campus. Since we have been a school district, um, TWS double A has added additional sports. We have added, uh, middle school sports. We think those are incredible benefits to our community and our families. But the fact that we have one track and one turf, uh, field at the high school, um, and I think all of our board members can talk about the emails that they've received from parents concerned. Um, I think, Mr. Curry, you talked about, one of our track teams may have gotten four practices on the track, uh, during their season. Um, that's not the way it, it's supposed to be. Um, and we have so many teams because we have high school boys lacrosse, high school girls lacrosse. Middle schools boys lacrosse, uh, middle school girls lacrosse. Uh, we have boy soccer going on, high school boy soccer. We have, um, middle school soccer. We have elementary track teams. We have middle school track teams. We have high school track teams, all trying to use the same space. Uh, and it just doesn't work for us. So we know, and part of that Houston High master plan was to provide additional, uh, turf fields for our teams. Because the, the, when you have the inclement weather and you have the rain, it, you can't get out there and play on them or else your field may be ruined for the rest of the season. So as a board, we have been talking about, how do we respond to this need for the community? So, um, it's also recommended that we go ahead and spend that. And also too, we, we talked about, we received additional money, um, for benefits. Use that to turf, uh, some of our fields and also look at, uh, adding an additional track. So I think that's something that this board needs to discuss and, and, and talk to our, our programs and teams about, uh, who we're turfing, what we're turfing, what we're putting. But we know that we're gonna have to invest capital funding, um, that's in our reserve, uh, for those capital needs. So know that that's something that I think we have, have yet to discuss in detail. We, we've been having the conversations with stakeholders, but we know this is a, a desperate need. So once again, looking at the reserve, we have, uh, used our reserve responsibly. We have built this because we haven't been spending our general fund, uh, year over year. And we've seen also some, uh, benefit from, uh, the COVID, uh, S R funding that we, when it would pay for some things, uh, that we didn't have to pay for. But we are sitting at, like I said, around, uh, twenty-four, seven is our projected at the end of the, the fiscal year. Uh, but once again, that doesn't take into account that we have already spent and encumbered a lot of funds, especially when you're talking about the ones in, in pink. Uh, that were on that previous slide. Um, so know that, um, those, those things we've already discussed, we've already done budget transfers. That projection doesn't include those taken out. It also doesn't include, you know, some additional large purchases that we see coming. Um, so for example, it's a science textbook purchasing year. We're gonna, that should be about a million dollars that we're expecting to pay out of this fiscal year. That will come out of that. Uh, and you know, that's something we always budget for so that we can order the books now and have them, uh, ready in the schools by the time, uh, school starts. So, once again, over the past ten years, we've spent an average of two point four million dollars a reserve each year, even if, even while we are, uh, growing. That reserve amount, that's how we've stayed consistent with the amount of money that we have. So those are keys. So let's talk about some of the positive things that we see coming, uh, this year. And we can't, we hope that the board approves this. Uh, and that we can go celebrate it with our teachers. I think that we talked about the A B Cs of H R that we are moving to. This would be a huge celebration for our staff. So what are the things that we are recommending, uh, for our staff? So first, uh, adjustments to the steps and the starting salary for teachers. Uh, we had the inherited, um, step schedule and salary schedule from Shelby County Schools, legacy Shelby County Schools. And it didn't make complete sense. Uh, as you moved up in years, on average, it was about a two percent, but you may see one year that was a two point three percent increase. And as you got in the higher steps, it may be a point four percent increase going from year eighteen in your career to year nineteen in, in your career. So one of the things we did in this process and Mr. Kathy and Ms. Stratton, uh, they worked hard through this, was making it a consistent matrix. So that if you go from year two to year three, it's a two percent increase. If you go from year sixteen to seventeen, it's a two percent increase as you're moving up in your career. So that's one of the things that you see, uh, in this matrix. Um, we also have a three percent COLA and steps for all other staff in the district. So whether you're a pair professional or whether you're a front desk receptionist, uh, there's a three percent cost of living adjustment. And if, for those people who are moving in their steps, going ahead and let them move up in those steps. One of the things that I'm, I'm proud of, and I think that rewards our families and is something special, the fact that we have a holiday bonus that this board budgets for every year. That we provide a thousand dollar, uh, bonus for full-time staff and five hundred for part-time staff, that we provide them at Christmas time. Uh, I think that's a special part of our compensation package. And then, um, another thing that you'll see in this budget. We know that we are going to make changes in our insurance plan. And it's gonna have to come on the employee side of things. It's gonna have to come within the plan itself. So we've been talking to, uh, our consultants about what changes to make as far as drug coverages and max copays. We, we're going through that process right now. We are going to make those adjustments and that'll be coming in May to the board when we talk about those other funds. So you'll see all those changes, but also too, we know that the district side of things, we have to make additional investments. So in this budget, you see an increase of eight hundred thousand dollars that the district is putting in to the insurance account. So those are the big changes. So I'm gonna dig into each of those specifically. Uh, and Ms. Stratton, you may wanna go ahead and come on up. You may help me do some of these. So let's talk about where we are. So, um, once again, we have moved conservatively and we've been providing cost of living adjustments to our staff. Um, but the other municipal districts around us, um, competitively, they were moving quicker than us, uh, with pay. So I, I took the lowest, we pay for advanced degrees. So I took the lowest, uh, bachelor's degree that we have and also took the highest degree that we have. Just so you can see an, an idea of what we were talking about. Um, so in comparing this year's salaries, Arlington was at fifty-two thousand. Uh, Bartlett was fifty thousand eight hundred and twenty, Carvel was fifty thousand. We were at forty-eight six, uh, and Lakeland was fifty thousand. So you can see that we were behind, um, our other mun- uni- municipals. And, uh, Ms. Strat can tell you when we were going out and recruiting to young teachers, sometimes it's hard to explain, but oh, look at the benefits package and look at all this where you have these additional savings. A lot of times they were really just looking at that first salary amount. So it's hard to, to convince them. Um, you can see if we look at where we were for the, the doctorate in education, Arlington was, uh, at sixty-three, six. Uh, and we were at fifty-nine, five. Uh, and you can see at the highest steps, when they hit year nineteen or step nineteen, year twenty. Um, we were at eighty-six, uh, Lakeland was at eighty-six and you can see everybody else was ahead of us. There's also a ranking that T E A does around salaries. So they take all the salaries matrices of the hundred and forty-seven districts across the state. And they rank your average salary. I don't think this is as helpful a metric. It's, it gives you an idea. Uh, because it, it could be skewed based on if you have younger teachers that are lower in the salary matrix, your average salary is gonna be lower. I'd rather look at, hey, what's their potential for earning as they're working through the district? I think that's, that's a more helpful metric. But, uh, using all the rankings and things out there that we can, you can see where we ranked. We were twenty-six out of the hundred and forty-seven districts. But we were behind all the other municipal, uh, districts when we look at, at salaries. So once again, where were we? Twenty-six out of a hundred and forty-seven districts. But what are we proposing is gonna have a significant, um, change. Our recommendation and what you see built into this budget is to go ahead and move our salary, starting salary for teachers to fifty-one thousand. Our recommendation and what you see built into this budget is to go ahead and move our salary, starting salary for teachers to fifty-one thousand dollars a year from the forty-eight um six um amount. So here's a comparison of where we are, if you go to the next one, uh our two matrices. So you can see once again, it moves every single step and also makes it a, a standard two percent increase between those. That is gonna have a significant impact on the lives of teachers uh who aren't paid enough anyway. Uh, so I, I thought it would be helpful for Ms. Strat to just give us a little perspective. What does that mean for some examples of where teachers are in their journey, education journey for us? So take us through some of these examples.
Well, I'm excited to share with you a few examples of how the new GMSD teacher salary schedule will increase the compensation for our educators for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So our first example highlights a brand new teacher working for GMSD. For this school year, the teacher earned a salary of forty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Under GMSD's new teacher salary schedule, this teacher will move up one step and earn fifty-two thousand, twenty dollars for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. That's a difference of over three thousand, three hundred dollars in increased compensation, which the educator will begin receiving in August. Our second example illustrates one of our highly experienced educators with a master's plus thirty distinction on step sixteen. For the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, this teacher was earning seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and two dollars. Next year, they will be making eighty-three thousand, one hundred and seven dollars. That's an increase of four thousand, two hundred and five dollars for our seasoned educator who's continued to grow professionally throughout the years. And finally, our third example demonstrates one of our veteran teachers on our highest salary step, which is step nineteen. This year, our educator earned a contracted salary amount of sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars. Next year, this educator will earn seventy-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars, which is an increase of four thousand, five hundred dollars. Our GMSD educators who have made the commitment to making teaching their lifelong career can expect to see some of the highest increases along their salary step and lane. And I do wanna take a moment to say something especially important. While other school districts made salary adjustments last year, our educators chose to stick with us, having faith in our leadership, that their compensation would be a priority in this year's budget. And their, their loyalty did not go unnoticed. Department leaders took a thoughtful look at their budgets, making intentional strategic adjustments so that we could prior- prioritize our people. And this new salary is in part a way of saying, thank you for sticking with us and thank you for giving your very best efforts to our students. So combined with our competitive benefits package, that hundred thousand, or that one thousand dollar holiday bonus, this new salary schedule, it does position GMSD not only to attract the best educators, but to keep them as well.
And in talking to other superintendents, um they're all looking at providing cost of living adjustments. This is not going to move us up to number two, number three. We still may be at the same ranking, but we're going to be closer where we are uh based on if they give two percent to three percent raises. But if you look at our total compensation package, for a teacher that there's only a hundred dollars difference, uh that's dramatically different between this district and another. And you can really see how there is a, a much bigger difference when you look at the other benefits uh that we provide to. Cause we do think we have a really strong compensation package uh for our staff. So know that we, that was based on previous information and, and comparison of their districts, and we know that they're going to make adjustments also. So let's talk about um what we're looking at. So step increases, once again, have been adjusted to make sure there's a constant two percent increase. So for our teachers, and you saw a range of, of increases in their salaries, but i- it's gonna be a significant change. Whether you're a teacher in year one or you're a, a teacher in year thirty, there's gonna be significant changes in, in what they're being um compensated for. Also too, for our other staff, whether you're talking once again about our paraprofessionals or you're talking about uh our regular teacher assistants or front desk receptionists or medical records clerk, they're all uh going to see a cost of living adjustment of three percent, and those that are eligible for steps um will receive those. And then once again, we have continued uh to budget for that holiday bonus that our, our staff receive. So uh, when we talk about recruiting staff or whether we're moving to our new uh terminology of attracting our staff and building them up and developing them professionally and retaining them, we have a lot of things that I think that um this board and this district has moved strategically to provide. Uh, we honor years of service, up to twenty years. Uh, we have a holiday bonus that we provide staff. We have been fully funding our OPEV and, and providing for those insurance benefits for our staff who receive those. We have a health and wellness center where staff can go for free and receive free uh prescriptions when they, when they go there for the staff. And it, and you can get in and out quickly. Um, all of those huge benefits uh for our staff uh make sure that we have a strong compensation package. So I'm, I'm proud of what we are doing around uh our staff benefits. So if you'll have any questions, we'd be glad to answer those or we can answer them at, at the end. Uh, and we can talk specifically about areas where you see these. Okay, let's go on to um other changes that you see reflected in the budget. So um, as you know, we have a compensation committee. So when we have principals or when we have um heads of departments that want a new positions or they want salary adjustments, they make recommendations to the compensation committee. And they thoroughly go through what are gonna be the job responsibilities and benefits, what's comparable pay for those positions. Um, they're constantly looking at those. So based on um that committee's work, we have um some, three major changes, but there are smaller adjustments that you see reflected in the budget. But the biggest one is an additional administrator at Houston Middle School. Uh, we also see some salary uh schedule adjustments for academic behavior interventionists, and I'll talk about all of these. And then also some training for our uh paraprofessionals. They are hourly. And so one of the challenges that we have faced with those staff is how do we provide them mandatory and training that we need to do uh for them uh with students? Or whether we're talking about active shooter drills, how do we provide those when we don't have it built into their pay schedule? So this allows us to provide inflect days, so it flexed days, so that we can either meet at the beginning of the school year or quarterly. However, the department decides to, to use this, but it provides that time that we can train up the, those staff. So let's talk about how, um, why Houston Middle School? So why were we thinking about adding an additional administrator to Houston Middle School? So one of the things we look at is the number of administrators um in each building based on the number of students, and we're also talking about responsibilities. Uh, we have had added a myriad of events uh and opportunities at Houston Middle School. Whether we're talking about lacrosse and track and soccer, all of these activities and events that uh we are now sponsoring as a district, we're providing stipends for. There has to be an administrator attending those events. So their evenings have become very full. When we also look at the number of IEPs and five oh four meetings that those uh staff are um having to, to lead uh in the school, it has become a challenge. So you can see when you look at Houston Middle School's ratio of administrators, and this includes principals and assistant principals in the school, you can see that they were a ratio of one to three hundred and twenty-five uh students. And they had been requesting this over several years, saying, hey, we're, we're really struggling to, to make ends meet. And how we're balancing the afternoons and responsibilities, cause they are, they're everywhere covering uh numerous events and during the school day too. And looking at that, the compensation committee uh said, yes, this is uh one that we need to have. And it, I think it brings it to a ratio of, I think, one to two hundred and forty-four uh for them at the middle school when you add a fourth uh administrator for them. So that's one of the things that's included in this budget. And they're not paid a hundred and thirty thousand. I just wanna be clear when we say that. That's all encompassing. That includes all their benefits, their retirement. That's everything that we have to provide to have a new position uh for that individual. So um, that is that position. When we talk about salary adjustments for the behavior interventionists, one of the, and this is a small, specific. But one of the things that we found was at the end of the steps for these individuals, these interventionists, uh it was upside down. They would have made more money staying in the classroom versus becoming an interventionist. And we wanna make sure that our pay schedules move once again up as you're increasing in responsibility that you should be increasing in your pay too. So we don't want anyone to say, well, I should have stayed in the classroom and instead of moving into this position. So that's why you see those changes for that position and the compensation committee had looked at that and made that recommendation. And then once again, I talked about the training for our paraprofessionals. Okay, other highlights uh that we have, um this request actually came from um the high school itself. And, and they came up with a way to do it in a budget neutral uh manner, utilizing current staff that, that they have. One of the challenges that they face is, in a way, Houston uh High School act, operates like a private school. Uh, you're constantly trying to recruit students and not only students from outside the district, but our own students. How are we trying to uh make sure that we are showing all the great things that are happening in our district? How are we working with our middle schools, our elementary schools to make sure that uh you wanna be a Mustang uh when you grow up? You wanna come to Houston High School and hear all the opportunities that you have. So um, one of their requests was to add a position that's uh focuses on the academies and student recruitment and enrollment at the high school. They're gonna be working with Ms. Crowder too, I think, to do PR and promotion around how we're drawing students to the high school. So that falls under student, student readiness. But it's budget neutral, uh but it did go through compensation committee. But we think it's gonna be something that you're gonna see benefits uh from it, at, at the school. Uh, we also had some requests from our coaches and our teams. And once again, they found budget neutral ways to do this. Uh, once again, because of the dramatic increases in the number of activities we have across the district. And once again, we have girls' flag football that is coming online and in, in the fall. Uh, the coverage of events has become a challenge once again, and also scheduling all the fields. So they, they had requested an assistant athletic director, and once again, they find a way uh to do this in a budget neutral way. One of the challenges we face too is we've uh expanded our uh youth lacrosse programs. And so we're gonna need, this person's responsibilities is also going to be everything around elementary school lacrosse programs as far as scheduling and fields and uniforms. Um, but we've also talked about the need, and this is something we heard and are hearing now during our strategic plan process. There are students who may not uh be the most competitive at a sport, but they're, they enjoy athletics. They enjoy that opportunity. But because uh we have a, a s- school of nineteen hundred students, they may not be able to make it, a team that only has five starting players on it. Maybe they wanna play basketball. Maybe they wanna play baseball. Uh, and are there other opportunities? So we've talked about expanding that and opening up an intramural program for students. Because even if you're not on the TWS double A most competitive team, it's something special to be part of a school team and be competitive and have those friends and have that opportunity after school hour. So uh this person is gonna help us develop that intramural program at the school. And once again, they found a way to do it, a budget neutral through those uh fees for those activities. And then another one that they have also, that they've also uh requested is a strength and conditioning coach. All of our teams are using the Fields House and different weight uh training opportunities, but we want someone really skilled to do that for those teams. So um providing that in a budget neutral manner, they, they have come up with a solution for that. So you see, you'll see a strength and conditioning coach added to this budget. Those are uh the highlights, and I know I was talking for a long time. But uh we have our cabinet members here that we can answer questions and talk about everything from reserve to our different things in our budget or plans that we have uh moving forward for capital. We're, at this time, we'll open the floor. So you, uh, we are glad to answer questions.
Thank you, Superintendent. Um, question for the reserves. What type of account are the reserves located in?
They're in numerous accounts. So, so you, it's, it's funny when you actually see the real work. Uh, when you look at it, there really is just a bank account where money is actually sitting in the bank. And I know that Mr. Jones, you have a couple of different, as far as this, the LGIP and the savings to make some investments. But as far as our accounting system, um it's not recognized. It's, the reserve isn't through all accounts. So for the money that's rolling over from the previous year, is it the LGIP that you, you still have it? So it's in an LGIP account and it, it's how they're investing it and, and raising those funds. But if you look at where the money is coming from, like how does it go in there? Like, and when we look at current reserves, it's throughout the budget. Like you may have seven thousand that's rolling up from this of unspent money for, in the academics account, or you may have four thousand in this account. So anything that is unspent at the end of that fiscal year rolls into that big savings account.
So right now, what is our current uh rate of return on those, on the account?
I would have to defer to Mr. Jones. You, you can come up, Mr. Jones, if you want to.
I believe it's around four and a half percent.
So, a little bit under a million dollars on twenty-four million?
Yes.
Right. And what are we currently doing with, where is that going to? Is that just going back to make the reserve amount higher or are we doing anything with that?
We use uh interest income in part to balance our budget.
So you, when you look at the revenue side, it's, it's one of the line items on the revenue side of things. So that's an, so that is one of the things that this board does have to discuss is as, if we spent down, or is there, you wouldn't see the same rate of return. You would not see the same uh interest income that you have.
Thank you.
I mean, you, oh, sorry. I'm not really commenting. I was shedding a little more light on, on the minimum reserve. You touched on it kinda high level, but I mean, that, that's something that not only do we wanna do because we're fiscally conservative people or, you know, mindful people um as an organization. But we are mandated by law to keep a certain minimum operating budget intact at all times. Uh, I think the superintendent did a great job kind of explaining how the timing of the funding, uh, when it arrives, you don't just call MLGNW and say, hey, we're not gonna pay our bill for a few months, cause the money's not here yet. So it's a big part of that operating budget. And when you're trying to explain that to someone that just sees the balance and they're like, you're sitting on a stack? No, um, not exactly. So I, I appreciate you pointing that out, but I, I wanna make sure that people understand, maybe that do listen, that it, while it is also because of uh great practices, it, it is um, certain part of that is absolutely required to actually sit there.
I know we're gonna talk more about it um later on when we get to the budget amendment. But the eight hundred thousand that we're looking to add, it looks like we're pretty much just front-loading what we're about to have to vote on later on this evening. So we're, we're just conceding that we're gonna have to put more in. So, oh, year over year, it's not gonna be much extra because we're, we're putting, uh, or actually, it might even be a little bit less. Uh, I just wanna make sure I'm clear on.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's too full, so.
You're talking about the healthcare.
Yeah.
Yeah, eight hundred thousand in additional uh that we're gonna put in.
Yeah, so um, once again, we have a, a consulting company that helps manage this and, and looks at our claims uh and, and helps us create our, our benefits package for our staff. But it's, it, I would say that we're looking at about two million dollars that we have been off. Uh, and know that it has been increasing. We've seen that year. It, it's really in the past two years that we've had to offset our insurance account. Prior to that, we had been building that health insurance account reserve, which is a separate account. So in the previous um insurance account, I think we had budgeted, it was one point three million that we had left over last year in that health insurance account. We spent all of that and we had to come in and fill it up. So uh, that's what I'm saying. We're, when we get ready to look at that, um, we need to look at, we are planning eight hundred thousand that we made reductions and we're having to invest out of our general operating account. We need to make sure that we're filling back up uh that reserve amount that's insur- inside the insurance account. And that'll be money from our other reserve, our regular reserve. But we're also gonna have to make uh changes to our insurance plan too, uh changing the amount of coverage, changing the copay for staff. We're gonna have to look at everything to readjust that insurance account. It will still be of, and just on early um swipes at it, it's still going to be a very rich plan in comparison to our, our neighbors uh and other programs. That's something that we can be proud of, but it is going to move us in the right direction. So in talking to, and we can just talk about early swipes at it, and talking to our consultants, what they typically see when we're talking about increasing insurance rates, we're probably talking about a five percent increase um for staff and what we're investing. And that's something you may have to take over multiple years. But know that we're gonna have to make changes, once again, also with the types of coverage and drugs. We're gonna have to look at all those things, but that'll be next month where we talk about those.
Okay, yeah, I, I appreciate the explanation. I'll just, I, I noticed the, the extra eight hundred on that. I, I know we're gonna get into it. I'll go ahead and thank everyone in advance, cause obviously there's a lot of work that goes into this. I appreciate the summary. I think we've been lucky over the last few years, um where the state funding has increased a lot. I do worry that we're gonna get to a point where the state funding is gonna plateau. And so I think, I don't know how far we are from it, but I think, I went, I did a presentation for the East Shelby Republican Club a couple of weeks ago. And we went, and I had gone back, using our budget documents and looking back at the state funding. And I, I'm wanting to say we were about six million more over the period in state funding. But I do wonder if we're, we're gonna start, you know, flatlining on that. And, and if we do, obviously, then, you know, then this. And if we do, obviously, then, you know, then this becomes a lot more difficult of a process. But I'm glad we're still in a position where we are receiving increased funds from the state. I think the voucher legislation, I think we're going to have to see how it impacts us. I think there will be some from that, but we don't know yet. And we also, there's a floor for the state funding, but we don't know if the county funding is going to be impacted. I think there's some.
I think it is important to talk about the county funding, and I mentioned this at the FAC. We have not received, and this is early in the budgeting process. It's very difficult to build a budget when you don't have all your revenue projections yet. So as you know, the county commission budgets an amount of money for schools. And I'm going to throw out a number, it's not the exact number, but let's say it's four hundred and twenty-nine million. I think it's around that. Four hundred and twenty-nine million for all education in Shelby County. Based upon the number and type of students that we have, we get a percentage of that pot of money for our operating accounts. So what we saw last year, for example, was in the previous fiscal year, we equated to four point three six percent of the students in Shelby County. That year, we had the same number of students, but the number of students in other municipals and in Shelby County increased. We went to four point two two percent of that pot of money. And that was about a negative three hundred thousand dollars swing for us. So know that, we always talk about, we're building this, but until we get those real revenue projections from the county commission, and that's certified in May, that we typically receive that document, we're still kind of just estimating what we think we're going to do. We have budgeted the same amount of money for the local funding that we have, assuming that we would be at the same percentage. But that's always something that we have to adjust. I share your concerns with what's going to happen with state funding. There's no guarantee there's going to increase. I do know that we will receive one more year of increase from the governor because once again, they have been moving to increase that teacher salary up to fifty thousand. So we're a year ahead of that, so we should see an increase for that. One of the things that we all try to, always try to take into account, and this is something that I wish I'd answered different at the FAC. They ask me, how do you think the other municipals are doing this with their salaries? Why have you been behind? Where's the spending difference? And I said, I don't build their budget, so I don't know. But I do know one difference. When we didn't get the three G schools, we had to, and it's an incredible school, we had to build Forest Hill Elementary School. We had to build onto Houston Middle School, we had to build additions onto Houston Middle School. We have modulars at our classrooms. We've invested a significant amount of money as a district from our general operating account, close to forty million dollars that we have invested over the past eleven years there. That's something that we have done that other districts have not done. Typically, they're just taking the county funding, or they're taking their funding from their local municipality to provide for those capital improvements, but we have been doing that. We've been going in partners to fund all of those things. If we see decreases in funding, there are lots of things that we can change. But one of those would be, and we've already cut it deep on this one, but Mr. Kathy always talks about, we would be cutting those capital improvement projects that we have out of the general fund budget. We can change our device procurement. So know that we are on three-year, depending on the type of device, three-year, four-year plans that we have to buy new devices to make sure that they're always fresh for the students. We could stretch those, and we also have teacher devices. We can stretch those programs longer. So for us, we have internal levers. We talk about the amount that we are investing into our OPEB account. We don't have to fully fund that account. We have plenty in our reserve to fund as you go. We wouldn't be meeting our arc. But know, those are things that we can adjust internally if we did see those changes. So I feel comfortable, there are some things that we can do to mitigate those challenges, but there isn't a guarantee that we're going to continue to receive revenue year after year after year.
Yeah, and like I said, I support, especially in investment in our teachers. I think that's, I think that's great. I'm very happy to do that. Just by my personal nature, I like to look two or three steps down the road. It's almost like a chessboard. I want to see the moves coming, and the moves I see coming from the state is I think are eventually, our revenue from them is going to plateau. And so it's going to, you know, mean it's going to be a lot more challenging. But I think for this year, and it sounds like for next year, we feel like we're in good shape and we're able to continue the investment. But I think at some point, we just need to, as a board, to be aware that, you know, I don't think the times are going to be just great. And sales tax. So it looks like y'all just made a pretty good educated guess on sales tax. Hopefully, it doesn't go down, but if it, and it could go down more. And so I guess that's why, one reason we keep a healthy reserve in order to be able to project just in case. Who knows what's going to happen with the economy and tariffs and all that? So I think there's a lot of uncertainty, and I know that's something they're considering at the city level as well. So I think it's top of mind for everyone. But from what I've seen in the presentation, from my reading of the document, I commend the staff. I think we've got some really good things here, and obviously, I'm looking forward to hearing from the departments.
I'm really glad you mentioned kind of the uniqueness of our district. We spent a lot of time, especially as we're talking about the Houston High master plan, talking about what other people in other communities in our area have been able to do, and to point out the differences in how we have funded a lot of our own capital improvements. Whereas on the flip side, a lot of those communities have gone just through those local and county revenue sources to do those projects. We've kind of bitten off a lot of those ourself. And, you know, just a couple of years ago, I wanted, I really, I love the matrix just because that's the way my brain works. It's really helpful for me to see exactly what the steps look like, and it makes it super simple, in my opinion. I mean, it's one of those things, sliding scale. If that was brought up, and I know with retention and recruitment, it's always going to be one of the first things, point of reference, of comparison. And I do look at the whole package, but, you know, everybody sees that differently. I do think it's really important to say, like, just a couple of years ago, we were here and whoever was here. And it's a lot of this. It's a lot of the movement of that. And with the state's requirement for the minimum threshold, you know, we all had different plans as to how we were going to get there and that timeline. At the end of the day, guess what? We're all going to be there when we're required to be there. And it wasn't haphazard on our part. Quite frankly, I think we went in heavy on some other investments in the past two to three years specific to benefit our staff. I think of the clinic, for instance, you know, and those were all things that were dedicated to support employees. It's not a matter of, it shouldn't be a race, and it really, when we look at the ranking, I appreciate you pointing out kind of how that could be dependent upon the makeup of your teacher kind of demographic with experience and age range, for instance. And so all those things, little nuances that go into that, it's not just black and white. Like these guys paid this, these guys paid that, and, you know, like who's moving the needle this year versus, you know, and it's not a race to point five more or whatever. I think it's really important to look at it holistically. But I do appreciate the, as people in the community and, you know, staff are all kind of anticipating this time of year because they do see the, and I really appreciate pointing out kind of that, hey, we stuck around, we stayed with it because we had faith in the planning for the future. I feel like this is getting us there, this is accomplishing that, and this is a great story to tell. You know, it is a wild time, you know, as Board Member Curry was just saying. Anticipating funds that we don't know what they're going to look like just due to the economic climate. I mean, sales tax revenue has been really fantastic the past few years. Well, guess what? I don't anticipate it being that way, you know, maybe in the next couple of years. And I'm not, and we're, nobody's alone in that, but we're mindful and thinking ahead. And I just thought it would be really prudent to point out that this isn't like a catch-up. I feel like as much as it is like just very strategic, very thoughtful, just another thing that we're doing to shore up, you know, what we feel is right for the people who, like you said it yourself. I mean, it's like, my goodness, we want everybody to make a million dollars a year. In my opinion, that's what they're worth. But based on where we can be, where we should be, I think it's important to say that we're not doing this because we have to, because it's the requirement. We had a plan all along that we've worked towards, and so I appreciate that. That's, that does go back to the kind of patience, and I'm grateful for that from our staff who has understood that part of the process. And I hope that, depending on how this shakes out with approvals and such, that people will be able to recognize that. And so thank you to not only the HR department, the compensation committee. I think it's really important, but it didn't just happen like that. This has been intentional for some time.
Are there additional questions? Go ahead.
The assistant principal at Houston Middle School, when you throw up the ratios, that is a no-brainer. And it's something that when we added an additional assistant at Houston High School just a couple of years ago, it transformed the balance of that admin staff. We saw it, and we felt it. And the staff felt it, the students felt it, the families felt it. And this is something that families at that particular school, we hear from a lot on that front. And I think it's important to say that, you know, it's different than when you work there. That school's doing a lot of different programs, additional programs that didn't previously exist. And as we talked about at the high school, when we went through this exercise recently, the amount of five oh fours and IEP participation and planning and meetings that occur, just to be able to offer something that is truly supportive of the needs of students. I mean, the most well-intentioned people can do what they can spread over, but if the intent is to really make sure that that support is, one, not stressing the people that are having to do it, but also giving the most to the people who they're working on behalf of, you know, in the student population, that right there speaks for itself to me. And I think that it would really help streamline and smooth out some things that have recently been added. And I don't just mean the sports or the athletics. I mean, there's just so many things that have been added. The theater program's been reinvigorated, and, you know, our special populations at that school, there's been a lot of focus on just expanding programs. And so to have good leadership from the admin standpoint, better balanced across the school, I'm excited to see that that's part of the suggestion, ask, request, and then based on this, the recommendation. I do have a question about this assistant athletic director being kind of, I appreciate how you explained it. I can tell you that the folks in the world of sports probably see this as a big benefit. I know that the parents, when they hear about this, I've told anybody, I don't know if someone could invent something that just manages our facility usage. I'd ask for a budget amendment to try to consider that. But it's just big, you know, you can have, and I wanted to make sure I understood. Do you see this being someone that's already there, that's going to take on additional responsibilities, or bringing someone on that would just do this function?
It's a new, it's a new position.
And then, you know, the unknown are these fees and from a standpoint of funding to make it budget neutral. But I guess based on what we know now, we anticipate roughly due to the participation, that that'll get us about where we need to be.
That's right.
Strength and conditioning coach, I know has been an ask by a variety of programs, not just at the high school, to have someone official in that capacity. We've had a lot of great people that have helped maybe either stipend for a specific team over the years. And in this case, would this be the kind of thing that a particular program would help bring in? Or would we post this, and someone would apply, kind of like how the coaches have been doing? Do you think?
In our projection, we're probably talking about outsourcing this, so hiring someone and paying someone that this is what they do. They would not be full-time for us, but they're going to come in the afternoons and train our different groups of students and help them lift, so it'd probably be outsourced.
Okay, very good. And, you know, talking about just safety of students and student athletes, and so this would be someone that all teams would have access to all programs?
Correct.
Very good. Okay, I'll wait to get to the other couple of things here because I'm excited about those as well. Thank you.
One question on the assistant AD, with that being revenue neutral, we anticipate any increase in fees?
Well, we're talking about adding new programs. First, we don't predict an increase in those fees or costs for those individuals. But like I said, we're talking about adding, and part of their job responsibility would be developing this whole.
But not an increase for any existing students.
That's correct.
So I do have one more question about the student recruitment.
Yes.
I guess position. Well, two questions on that. Number one, why HHS instead of HMS?
Well, typically because of the space. At Houston Middle School, we typically don't have space to have large numbers of transfer students coming in. It's limited. And when we're talking about the high school, that school was really built for two thousand students. And so that's always been a challenge for us when we look at the numbers of students at that school. The programs that we offer, the teachers that we have, the AP course, the dual enrollment, that's all dependent upon that two thousand students. So we've typically, through our academies, brought in, it depends on the year, it's dramatically changed. When I started, we were fifty fifty. We were, half of our students were Colerville, half of our students were Germantown. And over the year, we've been reducing that amount. And I think we're sitting in about three hundred and fifty transfer students at Houston High School that are coming in through those academies. But this is more important than that too, than just hitting those numbers. This is about selling the message of Houston High School and the programs that we have to offer. But really, it's about space. At Houston High School, it's about, hey, here's what we have. If you look at our STEM program, if you look at our CTE programs, if you look at our fine arts programs, we have something for everyone. And as y'all know, once you find out about all the incredible things they're doing there and see them, we can meet any student's needs, so it's about sharing that message to the community. So keeping our own people first would be our first goal.
Okay, so that was going to be my next question.
Yes.
Is it going to be focused more so on the transfers or keeping Germantown students in Germantown?
First is, we wouldn't have any transfer students except for employees if we didn't have those space needs that we have and program needs at our schools. That's not our objective. Our objective is, we are Germantown schools, for Germantown families, we want to provide for them. So once again, it's about keeping them and making sure that we are a choice for our families. And a lot of times, we find that sometimes people don't know what's happening, or a lot of times, people don't know what's happening at the high school. So we've done a lot of programs and initiatives to do that and make sure that we're getting our younger students into our schools. So for example, the seventh grade day that we have where we bring all the students to the school, the eighth grade days that we have, bringing all of our eighth graders to the high school so they can tour the CTE programs or tour the elective programs, or just get to meet the teachers and staff, making them feel at home. Once again, making them know that they can be a Mustang, and there's something for everyone at Houston. That's the message we want to share. We want to tell people that we know that people choose private schools for different reasons, and those can be valid reasons, but we hope that you choose it for those reasons, not because you just don't know about what we have to offer.
I think that there's a tremendous opportunity in Germantown for this to be very effective. The next question is, do you anticipate the number of transfers decreasing if this student recruitment role is effective as hopefully it is?
Yes, that's always the objective. Like I said, we always have said, we set an optimal capacity for each of our schools, and we balance that number based on those numbers of resident students that we have. So yes, it really could if they're doing their job the right way. But there is a limited number of students. You know, we have a demographer that looks at the birth rates of students in Germantown to help us with our projections, so.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and I think it's just kind of, I guess, bringing that up. I think, and I'm not from here originally, but I've been here almost eighteen years, so I've got a pretty good feel for the history. Neither Germantown High nor Houston, neither one of them at any point were a hundred percent Germantown residents. Not even close. Like Germantown High was probably forty to fifty percent at the most Germantown residents. Houston was forty to fifty at the most Germantown residents. I think there's a misconception in the community that, you know, our high schools have always been a hundred percent Germantown students, and that has never been the case. Germantown High zones back in the day, because I had a friend in college. Uh, Germantown High zones back in the day, because I, I, I had a friend in college, um, and he lived up by Colonial Country Club.
Yeah, we went all the way to Countrywood. I remember when the bus routes went all the way to Countrywood.
So anyway, but he lived in, uh, over by Colonial Country Club and, uh, he went to Germantown High. And so it's just, so I thi- so I, I think, I think when we hear about that, uh, I just, I think it's just a good opportunity to kind of point out for the community. I think there's been a bit of revisionist history that, okay, like, you know, Germantown High was always a hundred percent Germantown and Houston High was always a hundred percent Houston. Never has been the case. Matter of fact, I would say at this point, there's never been a time where we've had more Germantown residents in our high school than, you know, and so, you know, I just think it's important because I, I think there's some narratives that get out in the community. And I think it's just, you know, since you brought it up, I think it's a good time to kind of make sure, you know, everyone's level set on that.
Well, if y'all need volunteer hours, I'm happy to come and work with this person and spread the good news. And, um, I do appreciate, I know it's been part of our strategic plan for some time. And adding, and over the past five years, we've, we've really dedicated a lot of resources to this very thing. And so further investing in that, I think, is, is important. And, and I do think, you know, we've seen the shift since adding the seventh grade. You know, it was great because we were doing the eighth grade day and I was like, hey, we're inviting eighth graders to come after the private school deadline. To say you're coming there has already passed. Well, that's not gonna work, you know? We have to show them the good news sooner, plant the seed earlier. And then it was this grow your own from the elementary school. And when we got the, you know, wrapped the eight shirts out and then now I have second graders that are like counting down to be a Mustang from Forest Hill, Farmington, Riverdale, Dogwood. And, and that was all intentional. Um, so we've continued to see that and, and it's, the thing is, is there's a lot of, there are so many options. So we have to keep it up. We have to ramp it up. We have to, you know, um, so I appreciate, you know, that we don't just say, hey, we tried some things, yay. No, it's, it's a constant. It, it, we're, we're, I, I want everybody that lives here to go here, you know? I understand why some don't and, and I respect that. Um, but like we said, it's as much about, um, information and, and making people aware. And I think the better we do it that, I appreciate this being identified as, as continuing to do that. Um, I do have a question. I don't know that we, did we hit on this? The lead counselor stipend? Have we gotten that yet? I don't think so.
Um, it, it, it's a smaller amount of money, so we weren't going to specifically highlight that.
I think it's important because it's a lead counselor.
Um, we're looking at adding an, an additional stipend to, to one of our counselors to help, um, with the overall process. One of the things that we've talked about, um, as a board is making sure that we have incredible programs for our parents. And I want to see that continue to grow and be strengthened. Um, and so we've had events, but I don't think we have done enough to promote those. So, uh, and we, and we've had in- incredible events like whether it's anti vaping, or we talking about social media, uh, those programs, those things that are, or we talked about anxiety, uh, and I think about some of the events that Ms. Hubman's, uh, rolling out for parents right now. How are we responding to those needs and, and what, uh, resources can we provide those parents? Um, that's part of the objective for this lead counselor position, but also just the paperwork submission that our counselors have to submit to the state so that person who's collecting all that information. So.
Well, I'm glad I asked because those are things that, that the, that the parents in our community currently continue to ask for. And I'm like, oh, we had that thing. And I'm even, it's even me. Oh, there was an ESE email that came out. And I said, oh, I missed the second quarter so and so. I should, that should have been the one I, I listened to like most. And I just missed it in my Yahoo, um, where things go to sit for a long time. Um, a- and so again, it, it, the, both things that we were just talking about are just all about the PR part of what already is there. Um, and, and so again, I appreciate, uh, the investment and that promotion of these things. Um, I was going to ask you about the librarian, sorry, part-time library assistant.
Yes, so when we, that's another one that when we, when our compensation committee looked at all the schools, they have part-time, uh, library assistants and, and they need that position. Forest Hill did not have that. Um, and so they were making do with a general education assistant that they're pushing into that space. Um, but they were short on staff compared to the other, and the other schools. Uh, and so we make sure that we provide an even balance. They already had those positions. But when Forest Hill started, they had a lower number of students that we were projecting. So that's how they were making that, that need or meeting that need.
And then our librarian over there is also our lead.
Lead librarian.
For, so she does a little extra anyway.
Yes.
So this has been ma- making that hopefully kind of catch up on just some balancing of, okay.
And they have, and, and part of the need is because they are so successful and have a strong library there. When, so when you think about the number of students that are coming in the mornings, uh, and checking out books and coming during free times, it is a, a machine happening in there where they're returning the books and they're checking out new books and scanning and inventory. Uh, and then also helping the students find the selection. They're not always that skilled at, uh, finding those. And we're still going to need parent support, uh, in that location too. But this makes sure that we are providing the same amount of resources to all of our elementary schools with that part-time position.
Makes great sense. Um, the, um, admissions retention registrar.
That's the position that we were just talking about at Houston High School. Yes. We, we're, we're toying with the name.
I like that, I like that though.
We don't know if registrar was exa- exact name, because we do have a registrar that does all the clerical and financial work for it. So we're still working on the name of it, but it's.
As long as it's not the bursar's office and I'm like, um.
But yeah, that, that is the same position.
Um, lastly, the ESE assistant flex day. So I was, okay, I'm curious because I was wondering if that was more to give them the flexibility or more to add?
That's to add required paid days for them so that we can provide training, whether it's on.
That's what you were talking about on that, okay.
Classroom management, behavior supports, or whether we're talking about active shooter drills, uh, whether we're talking about suicide training, just how are we fitting in all those required trainings? Um, I don't know if I've missed other things, but, uh, it's how we provide those. But these, they would, um, be required and they would be, um, paid for them to complete, uh, X amount of hours, um, for, for trainings. And that would provide their payment for that because they are hourly staff.
That's what you were saying earlier and I was not associating it specifically to the ESE department. Okay, understand. Thank you so much. Do we want to talk really quickly about the OPEB, uh, payment? Um, so based on the budget and based on the recommendation, I don't take that lightly. It's been a long time coming. And, um, ba- so far fiscally, it seems like a real sound move to me, for what it's worth.
Yes.
Everybody. Um, and so I really appreciate that. And I, I think that you touched on it a little high level, but it's also one of those things like if you can take something off your list of things you have to pay and you can, let's get that bill off the books.
Yes, so, um, as you're aware, one of the, and Ms. Speakman, you could probably speak to this better than I could because you were at the table when all this went, happened with, uh, legacy Shelby County schools. Um, but one of the, uh, settlements in how we created our new school systems was they had staff in, uh, Shelby County schools that they had to, um, pay retiree benefits for. And so in order for them to give us the facilities, although it wasn't a direct, uh, payment for facilities, um, we settled, uh, with them and the municipalities and the original school board, settled, uh, with Shelby County Schools to provide, and I think it was a 12-year payment. Uh, and our payment was $355,000 a year and the purpose was to pay for, uh, those OPEB benefits for those staff. Um, that's something that comes, um, originally it was paid for by the city of Germantown for us. Uh, but when COVID hit, they said there was uncertainty, and I think you were on the board at that time, Ms. Griffith. Uh, there was uncertainty in what was going to happen with our tax base. And so the city said that they were passing that payment over to us. And so we took over the $355,000, I think it was 2016, I think we took over that, um, payment, it may have been after that.
Oh, it was after that.
Excuse me, 2019, um, that we took over that payment, uh, from the city and had been paying that. So this would be our last payment. We've already made our payment for this year because this is our 11th year. But once again, my recommendation and the budget amendment that we have tonight, pl- for us to balance the budget, let us go ahead and pay that off out of reserve so that we can use that money to provide benefits for our staff. Once again, I think it is due for a, a great celebration that we are finally ending that payment, uh, to Shelby County Schools. Did you get a tear in your eye, Mr. Curry, or are you just wiping? I didn't know if that was emotional or allergies, I couldn't tell.
A little bit of both. Uh, no, it's, uh, and I saw Collierville did the same thing. I saw, uh, the superintendent, I think, recently, um, proposed something similar. So the logic is sound and it makes sense.
And during the pandemic, we were, uh, in some strange times, but we did see some record sales tax, uh, revenue in our community.
If there are no further, uh, questions on the budget, we can go ahead and move into other items that we need to talk about and have on our business meeting in March besides, um, this. Um, we can go ahead and transition if y'all are okay to number two and, and budget amendments.
Oh, okay, nevermind. I, I did have another, okay, I thought we were going, that's fine. Um, so I think last year, we knew that science adoption was coming, right? So we, if I was, I went back and looked, I think we allocated 800,000, it was li- we, we allocated some last year to prepare, right? So we're not taking the full hit on the textbook this year. I just wanted to make sure I read the budget right and, and trying to jog my memory.
And I'll start from Missy. So actually, it isn't. We, we are budgeting a year in advance knowing what's coming. Because our goal is to go ahead and purchase those textbooks now. Because in order for them to be delivered by the time school starts, we have to go ahead and have that in this fiscal year. So Missy, I think you said this morning, we have a million dollars that purchase that is coming.
It's just under a million.
Um, that is coming, it will come, it will come before the board.
Board meeting.
Uh, that y'all will be approving tha- that purchase, but that is that amount of money. So what you see for budget in the next year is for the next, i- if I'm not mistaken, is for the next, uh, textbook cycle, isn't that correct?
That is correct. And it is a much smaller textbook cycle because it's only PE wellness and two programs of study within CTE. So the budget is cut for textbooks for FY26.
Yeah, so if you look at it, we, what we are doing is we are budgeting to buy the books in this fiscal year for next school year. So they're already ordered and, and they're already coming. So the amount of money that you see in textbooks for next year is not for the science textbooks, it's for PE and for the next adoption.
So the 800, because I remember, uh, I was trying to remember our discussion last year. So we, it was a higher amount, it was 804 last year, but that was in anticipation of the purchase that we were going to make this year.
Yes.
So the 460 is for, and then when we know when ELAs come up, I guess that's going to be the next one. Then that's going to be, we're going to have next year, this time, we're going to be talking about a, a big amount to prepare for that.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, I have a couple of other questions kind of throughout. Um.
Great.
Adding the stipends, um, the coaching stipends, has that kind of gone how we thought from a budgetary standpoint, like what we anticipated versus kind of what ended up happening this, this year?
Yes, I, I, I think we, we've been successful now that we, we've moved from the traditional coaches stipend to a percentage based on their pay, their base pay. Um, so it's a very detailed, you know, process of how they calculate that. They're also major and minor sports historically that they pay more, uh, for those sports. So it has, I, I think it's been a beneficial, um, adjustment for our coaches. We do have three coaching stipends that aren't included in this. We'll do it in the second reading of the budget that we'll have to add. So, um, for example, we, uh, we're talking about, uh, flag football. We do not have those, but these are smaller budget amounts that you'll see, uh, that we'll adjust next time, once we know the revenue. Uh, also too, we were talking about, there is a wrestling program, um, and we're talking about adding that to the middle school level, having a middle school wrestling program so that they can go compete in TMSAA's middle school program. Because we do have middle school wrestling, uh, even though they practice at the high school. But there will be three, um, stipends that are added to this in between the two readings.
So those stipends, uh, was actually, I'm glad you said that about the shift that we took for employee stipend, coach stipends I would call them.
Yes.
As opposed to, um, those that are just individual, you know, folks from the community that apply and get to go through that process.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the way that works, uh, Ms. Stratten, you can come up and talk about this too. Um, we calculate a, a base salary for them. If you're a non-faculty coach, we say, hey, because you don't have that payment for us, we do have non-faculty coaches, but they're calculated the same way. We just have to pick a, a, a target number for them. Um, so Ms. Stratten, I, I think you could tell, what is it based on the?
So for our non-faculty coaches, it's based on their outside coaching, prior coaching years of experience. We use our bachelor salary schedule. And once we confirm their prior years of coaching experience, we place them on a particular salary step, um, for the bachelors. And then it's a percentage of that salary based upon what sport they coach.
Makes sense. And then for any like assistants and that, that just put in through, uh, the district, the set or parent, whatever it is, that's, that's a little different, I guess. Um, but those are all staying the same. And when we still feel good as, I'm really asking because we've added so many additional programs, sports, athletic programs, that everything this first year is kind of going as we saw from a budget standpoint.
Yes, and, and know too, that Mr. Kathy and then I think Ms. Stratten, they've, there's also an increase in those coaching amounts because since it is based on your base pay, when we provide COLAS and when we adjust the teacher salary schedule, that also adjusts their stipends too. So know that, uh, it, it should keep up with infla- well, we're, not that we keep up with inflation, but. Yes, but as the world changes, uh, that amount should be increasing also. It's not a stagnant flat, flat rate.
And I, I think you'll see that in the, maybe the regular instruction that's in, it's in Missy's budget. Um, she and, and Mr. Kathy have already allotted for the increase in the teacher salary schedule as it impacts the coaches for next year.
Great, thank you for that. Um, was curious on the, where is it? The safety grant, um.
Yes.
Okay.
So, um, we used to receive different pockets of grants from the Department of Education. Uh, and when they created the new TESA funding formula, they took away those grants. So the safety grant went away and so the joke amongst school districts and superintendents was, oh, it's in the base. Um, so whenever we would ask, say, hey, you, you, you cut our safety grant, the answer was, oh, it's, it's, it's in the TESA base. Uh, so that's why that one, you see that grant disappearing. We no longer receive that grant because they increased TESA funding.
And so, um, any other, hold on, I'm sorry, I just had it there. Is there any other spot or place where state-specific funds are for kind of school safety? Uh, and I know that there was a shift in, uh, in the state last year, for instance, that started, um, offsetting some of the funds for, for instance, like SROs. A lot of those go through school districts. We're fortunate in our community that it goes through our city. They fund those, those employees, if you will, of theirs.
So, yeah, so the, so the state and the governor did this, the, um, they actually provide direct funding to the city of Germantown, um, for school resource officers.
And that, um, we think at this point covers fully all but one or two of our.
Yes, I, yes, I believe so.
Okay, thank you for that.
But I would, I'll have to check on the exact amounts that they're receiving, but they are receiving funding for school resource officers at each of our schools.
And while the SRO program has been ongoing, the, um, funding to offset it is new.
Yes.
This past year.
So as, when we started as a district, um, we were very thankful to the city of Germantown for providing those SROs at our schools and even our elementary schools. Um, but once again, we're, we're also thankful to the Department of Education now in the state for picking up that expense and now funding our city directly.
Exactly. Um, okay, I'm sorry. Now I see the account and line item here under the regular instruction. Thank you, um, for the coaching and other supplements.
Yeah, so if, if you were looking at, um, direct and indirect funding for the school district, um, school resource officers, for example, would be one that the, the city, um, is providing, but they're receiving funding for. PEG funding would be another example of that, that the city, it's, uh, essentially a pass-through for the city. They're receiving funding for, from cable bills for staff and that goes to provide services for our staff. So there are several examples of where, um, indirect funding that the city does receive revenue for.
I'm trying to hash that out and just to make sure I, I know which is direct and which is indirect. I work on that every year, but it, it does change some. And, and the example of the SROs, again, one of the greatest partnerships that, that we have in our district is with the Germantown Police Department on behalf of the support of the city of Germantown.
There are other examples of indirect funding that we have also. Um, so for example, we're still paying for the Riverdale expansion. When we, uh, got rid of the modulars at Riverdale, I think the city paid 5 million and the di- or, excuse me, the city paid 7 million and the district paid 5 million. Um, so we are paying that debt, um, for the city. So that would be included as an indirect cost to the district, even though we're the ones that are paying that debt every single year. Uh, you would see the same thing for central office. Um, this was a $4 million addition. And so the city is paying that debt for us, but we are the ones providing that revenue stream, uh, for the city. Uh, when we started as a district, computer. Uh, when we started as a district, computer devices, furniture, there were lots of things that, because we can't take on debt, that, uh, they took that on for us, and we paid the city for those things. But you could include that amount in indirect funding, uh, if, if you were creating a list of, uh, for the district.
Jason, do you have a rough total of what that number is?
Fifty-six million.
And that we're repaying.
No, no, not all repaying, yes, yeah, yeah.
The amount that we're funding, that we're paying for, for the city, but goes on to their bond issues.
That's correct, correct. Yeah, so I would say five million for Riverdale expansion. Mr. Kathy, you can expand on that. Five million for Riverdale?
It's in, uh, it's in the budget, and I'm going to find it for you and give you the exact number, but off the top of my head, it's around five hundred and twenty-seven thousand that we send the city each year.
Well, what's the total in millions of, that goes against their bonding authority out of that, that we're repaying?
Okay, uh, so for, the, the, the answer is, we paid five million on Riverdale, and that goes against their bonding capacity, four million for this building. And I believe as far as what goes against our, their bonding capacity, that's it from a school debt now. They carry Forest Hill, and they're actually paying for that when we don't provide any revenue, but that goes against their debt to the tune of twenty-seven million.
Which that is being paid for by the toll of taxes, correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
Thank you for that clarification. Departmentally, is there anything else that anyone wanted to highlight or say that weren't in the kind of summary of?
No, I, I think this is a, I think y'all are used to seeing a lot of changes in each of the departments. This year, the, the main thing was the, the increase for teachers and the steps and COLAs for staff. That accounted for ninety-five percent of most of the adjustments in the budgets that we see. Uh, other than that, it's the reductions that you see in, in capital outlay that we have to make ends meet, the reductions that you see in the board budget as far as, we're not having to pay as much for our ARC, for OPEB anymore. And if we go ahead and pay off the Shelby County, um, payment to them, uh, we can use that money for our budget next year. Those are our big changes that we see. But there aren't, uh, substantial changes in all the other areas.
Out of curiosity, do we have any update on, um, Shelby County funding? Kind of where we stand with, um, what our allocation of the piece from the new high school? Well, so we have the Fraser High School, then we have what was to be the new high school in Cordova that is now no more due to the site, um, being, I guess, I'm going to say unapproved. The site selection happened after the fact. I just still don't understand that, y'all. But, but where we stand on how those funds for those projects in Shelby County are planning to be funded, and what that impact for us would be. I know there's just been some uncertainty about that funding source for those schools, and how it would benefit or impact or not benefit, uh, the municipal districts, and that's been some gray area as we've entered into this season.
So we are not going to see an increase based on the Fraser High School. Uh, last time, Mr. Kathy and I had went and met with, uh, uh, representatives from the county commission, uh, fiscal department. They were going to pay for the Pra- Fraser High School, uh, using general fund dollars over a period of three years, three fiscal years. Uh, and so for us, unless they go to bond, we don't necessarily get our ADA, our, our split of that. So what they projected for us was that we were going to see, uh, the same amount of funding that we have seen over the past years, two to two and a half million dollars from county commission is what they projected for us over the next, uh, few years. Uh, we don't go ahead and budget for that money, as, as you know, we wait until we receive that, and then we recognize that money as it comes in to budget for it. So there shouldn't be an increase. As of right now, uh, the Germantown, Germantown High School, the new Cordova High School, um, know that there, uh, I know that Mayor Harris had worked really hard to put together diff- different funding streams to make that happen. And I think they had forty million definite in allocations from county commission or from also funding from the city of Germantown, um, for that, for that school. But know that, um, that project has not, um, they have not determined how they're going to pay that yet, whether they're going to go to bond. So the key is, if they go to bond for that project, we'll get our WFT ADA split of that, which is four point two to four point three six percent, whatever our share is of that funding, but we don't know how they're going to fund that.
Now they're back to the drawing board on where they're even going to be able to put it.
Yes, so.
So, um, something that was really on the horizon soon is now not. And I know we don't plan for that, and, which is the best route to take, you know? You don't spend money you don't have, and you don't even make a lot of plans based on the probability of it. But, um, I think that that's something that we all anticipated was coming closer. I think it's important to say that that's now further out. And so anything that we would have, uh, received as a, as it pertains to that, that project, um, we can't even be thinking about in, in short-term expenses or investments.
Yeah, so, so know that we, we tentatively look out, but we don't make plans for that funding until, um, we receive it.
Thank you.
So that's why we, I, I think it's always important to highlight for our community that we have that five-year, um, deferred maintenance list of projects that we have for the district. That is a plan of a tentative order that we want to accomplish those things. It is not a funding formula for how we're going to receive money for those things. So it's a really nice list to have, uh, but it's like making a list of all the things that are wrong around your house. That doesn't mean that you're necessarily going to be able to fix them all. It's, it's kind of like a, a, a priority list of the order that you would fix them in. But yes, as we receive that funding, and as we know about that, um, based upon our meetings with, uh, Shelby County government, that's when we make those decisions and make recommendations.
Well, that's, that's important to explain as we go through this process. I know we say it every year, but i- it's not a funding list. Sometimes things get, get pushed further back, sometimes things get brought sooner, um, and sometimes it's all about the revenue for that particular project. And how we see those streams, you know, uh, how we realize those. Um, and we've seen a lot of examples of that over the years. And, you know, that's going to be part of what people in the community continue to ask of, well, what about this? Well, what about this? Well, that's not even on the list. Well, that doesn't mean that we can't talk about it. Um, and looking at one of the highlights that you brought up, um, I think that there's, you know, we talk about, um, additional track, uh, additional practice space. Right now, that's the hot topic du jour in the community. We have more programs than ever before, and we are competing for practice space. Now, I'm not even talking about just getting out there to, to actually compete in, in, in matches, games, whatever they may be, but that practice space. And looking at, um, how we can get creative, uh, you know, in taking existing spaces and maybe making them, um, you know, something that could be used by multiple teams or, or, um, I guess organizations. And also the fact that we have, uh, an agreement with the city after two thousand twenty for park usage of parks that belong to us, but, you know, they were going to use them and, and, um, how, well, guess what? Things have changed, and we may need those sooner than later. So going back to the drawing board, uh, with our partners at the city to say, hey, Houston High Park, um, that's, that's back there now. By our new, uh, softball complex, you know, maybe those, that acreage is something that we have to talk about. We need that today. When I say today, I mean, we need that sooner than, you know, two thousand fifteen or whatever. Um, I mean, I'm sorry, two thousand, hello, where, what year are we? Um, yes, the ten years after the two twenties, so two thousand thirty, thank you. Um.
Yeah, that, and if you remember, that was one of our, our biggest challenges that we faced as, as we were trying to provide the, the footprint for Houston High School and the facilities that we had. Uh, the district already owned the baseball field and the tennis courts. Uh, that was already part of the district property. But we knew that our girls softball team didn't have a facility, and we really were talking about Title IX equality, uh, for our, our female athletes. And if we had a baseball facility and, and turf room and, and field for them, uh, it wasn't the right thing to have our softball girls playing at Grace E. Van. And we were thankful for that partnership, but that wasn't the right thing. So we worked with the city, uh, for a land, uh, swap agreement. And we gave up the property behind Forest Hill, behind this facility here, and it was actually, uh, wound up being, um, productive for the city because there was a three-way swap. Uh, where, uh, we had a developer that actually gave away or traded land that was next to the railroad tracks here for the city's water tower that they, they built there. We gave up this property, um, behind us here at, uh, Forest Hill, uh, for parkland to the city. And then, uh, we received those softball fields so that we could provide that or meet that need for our girls softball team. Um, but as part of that, uh, we did have to enter into an agreement and provide them time to provide for their softball program on the two lower fields. But that's become a challenge, and I don't know if the city has taken any steps to, to meet that softball need yet, but know that we received full, uh, usage of those. But we have a real problem now with our facilities, and we talked about this, Mr. Stratten, before you got here, and I think you personally have experienced it. Our track teams can't get on the track, um, because they have, we have elementary, we have middle school, we have lacrosse, we have soccer. And whenever it rains, the other people are needing to use that turf field. It's a big challenge for everybody trying to use that same facility. And so for us, I think that's one of our pressing needs, and I know that you're hearing from all the teams and the programs about the fact that we're not able to meet that, that need right now. And so we need to look at, um, a combination of turfing our fields or tur- building a new field that is turf to, to meet that need with a potential track around it. Uh, but we need to come up with a way to, to solve that problem, and we can't do it with our current facilities.
So isn't it gotcha? Like, this is something that I, uh, I, I mentioned to city leadership, um, as we were talking recently about the Houston High Master Plan. It's like, as we get creative, one of the things that seems to me to be low-hanging fruit is the existing property, um, that we have. And how can we, um, you know, work with them to work with, whether it be Parks and Rec, or, or how they, they had tried to find, you know, creative ways to, to use their other facilities so that we can get into those sooner. I just have already planted that seed, and I want to say publicly that, again, if, if we're not able to do that as, as part of the, the master plan anytime soon. And based on some of the CIP budget, uh, presentations that we've just been through on behalf of that plan, I think that one of the things that immediately came to me that could impact our families and our programs pretty quickly was the utilization of that, of that space. So I, uh, I, I look forward to getting to meet with our partners, uh, at the city, um, to, to try to come up with a plan sooner than later, because we have to do something. We're, we're trying to do all the things, and we are doing them, but we are literally partnering with our friends here in South Germantown at Germantown High School, um, to, to have access for track and field. To, to be able to have a place to go, and, you know, it's beautiful that we continue to talk about lacrosse getting off the ground at, at this high school where it is sanctioned by, by the state, but we're growing our own here. Let me tell you something, if you're going to be in the action in these teams at that level, we're doing a tremendous job just adding that elementary and middle school access to, to truly get people engaged, um, well before that, that ninth grade. And continuing to be able to do that, we have to have a place for these programs to participate, um, in practice. So, again, it's an evolution. It's something that's new. It's not something that, you know, we heard about a little bit before, but as you add programs and we're talking about adding, you just said it on the middle school level. But even with the flag football and that's coming, you know, we're anticipating needs, and that's just outdoor practice space. We talked about the needs as the addition of the, the lacrosse programs, um, of boys and girls also being in the same season of the, the time of year. What does that, uh, you know, look like for indoor space as well? That's something we don't have.
And I, I think we talked about, like, how can we grow programs? I think people don't realize, we receive zero funding from the state for athletics and extrac- extracurricular opportunities. So, um, Ms. Drew Linger and I were talking about the challenges of the lacrosse team, and we're thankful for that partnership with the city using the Johnson Road Park. But when they have a big event, they can't collect a gate at that facility. And so how are you offsetting the cost of referees and officials? And, you know, typically with our other sports, that's why we charge parents and people coming in, is to offset those official fees and the costs. Well, if you're at an open park and anybody can walk up from any direction, you can't regulate that type of event. So that's why we think about the future of Houston High School and our programs at that school, having facilities and, and fields there that we can control who comes in and out of the event. Even from the security side of things, much less the financial side of things, uh, is important to us.
Very much. Thank you for, for mentioning that as well. Would anyone like to take a, um, break or?
Is this kind of, oh, yeah, we did break.
Um, my, Ryan's like, oh, I signed up for that.
No, first of all, I'm sorry I wasn't here, maybe I would be here at the beginning. I just didn't know if we were kind of the ask question about anything type point, or.
We were glad to answer any of your.
Y'all want to take a break? Y'all been going the whole time, because I just got.
We're still budget, we're about to transition to, yes.
Okay. Um, I just had a couple, I mean, I, I'll, of course, watch the meeting and catch up and everything, but of course, after, you know, reviewing it, other than, you know, increases for salaries and things like that, it is a pretty flat budget. So it, and of course, fully support, um, increases for staff and that sort of thing. I had a, just a couple of questions, and one, we were talking about athletics, and you all may have talked about all this, so I'm sorry if I'm rehashing anything.
I think it's good to say things twice.
I know, obviously, we did bring in a lot of new programs last year, and I know that wasn't a huge increase in, in, in money for coaches and things like that. But I just didn't know if there had been, uh, and I know we're only one year in, and so it's, you know, maybe not even that time. But it, it seems like maybe over the next couple of years, we maybe should kind of step back and analyze and say, hey, is this, like, is this working out like we thought it should? Or are there sports that maybe we don't need to, you know, be included, maybe it just didn't work out? Or are there additional resources maybe we need to put into it, just because I know we added a lot of work for probably
Yes.
A lot of people bringing it in, and so I just, um, I, I don't, I, I didn't see a change in here, wouldn't have really expected it for this year on that. But I just, that was just kind of one comment I had, is maybe going forward, just keep a eye on that and see if that's something we need to adjust.
Yeah, so there is an increased amount of money, uh, for coaches stipends, um, because it is based on their base pay. Anytime that we make adjustments to that salary matrix, or we provide cost of living adjustments or steps, that, uh, they'll see that reflected also in their stipend, their stipends will go up too. So we talked about the fact that, not necessarily keeping up with inflation, but when we see increased costs, we're, we're trying to, to meet that need for them. So that is included in the academic budget that you'll see an increase. It doesn't change percentages, or like, which I think you're talking about a broader philosophical, uh.
Yeah, I just mean, kind of, you know, taking a look at it again, this was, this was new, it was different.
Yes.
And, you know, me, I fully supported it, and, and I think it's, it's great that we're doing it. But, you know, as we get a couple more years into it, maybe look at, you know, how it's going.
That's right.
And where, if we need to make any changes, that sort of thing. Also, I, I know, again, I'm sure you talked about the additional administrator at Houston Middle. And I, I, again, I, I support that. I know, again, all that our administrators are doing, and just with the increase in the number of IEP and five oh four meetings and.
And extracurriculars also.
Extracurriculars, where they're, they're there, and, and, you know, additionally, I, I mean, I'm thankful, again, that we're in a district where, you know, we don't have a lot of the worst discipline issues. But I know we have had increases in disciplines like, like everyone, every district has over the last few years. And so that would be just another thought is, you know, maybe we're fine at all of our other schools, but I'm, you know, i- if it's something we need to look at, at other, other schools too, over the next few years, I think that's something to at least look into. Uh, but of course, that's, you know, your
Yes.
Your place to, to analyze, so I, I'll leave that to you, but.
Uh, that's something that our compensation committee is always looking at, and the Houston Middle was also driven by a study of current ratio, so we'll share with you the chart. You can go back, Ms. Crowder can show. Uh, we actually looked at the number of principals in relation to the number of students, and as you can see, Houston Middle School was skewed. Uh, and it, and if you think about the responsibilities of an assistant principal in middle versus high school, and the afternoon activities that they have to cover is greater when you get to the middle and high school level. So, uh, know too, that, that's why we think it would be helpful to have that additional, uh, administrator there.
Definitely fully agree.
Well, yes, we need to look at all of her school coverage and in relation to their responsibilities.
Well, and, and again, I always say that just because they are really so busy. I mean, anytime I talk with any of our assistant principals, I mean, it's a, you know, you're, they're just always on the move. And, well, any of our principals, and so it's just, again, I think, something to take a look at, but, uh, I think those were kind of my main two points. I'll catch up on, on the rest. But, uh, I appreciate the budget document. It's always very thorough and helps me, and so I appreciate it.
Okay, it's three forty-nine. We've made it through the, uh, large portion of the budget and work session. If everybody is agreeable, um, let's take these eleven minutes to kind of just refresh, recoup, uh, get a, get a drink, run to the restroom. uh get a, get a drink, run to the restroom and meet back here at four P M. Okay. Thank you all, returning to the now what I'm gonna call the work session portion of the agenda. Agenda item number two, we have a variety of miscellaneous fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Is that right? Budget amendments, number twenty-six. Thank you. Twenty-four, twenty-five, that's what I thought. Numbers twenty-six, excuse me, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six.
I'll take twenty-two uh and twenty-three and then I'll defer to the next one. But twenty-two is, was already discussed during the budget work session, which is the early and final uh OPEB payment. I don't think we need to rehash those explanations. However, I would just like to add that it will be nice to be out from under that and celebrate that. That is a wonderful thing to be finished with.
Agreed. Thank you, Mr. Kathy. Any questions on uh budget amendment number twenty-two? All right. If we would like to move on to twenty-three.
Budget amendment number twenty-three is a request to move fifty thousand dollars from the capital improvement budget to the maintenance budget. Um I'll take full uh responsibility for that when we just keep fixing things and um, and our maintenance budget is at the point where uh we need to move that fifty thousand dollars to cover the remaining three months that we have in this fiscal year uh for maintenance. I went back through all of our expenditures and the truth of the matter is, things are just costing more. There, I wish I could give you, there was a big this or a big that like we had last year, but the truth of the matter is uh it's really just increased expenses. And this is not grabbing from reserve, that's just moving money from capital that hasn't been spent over to maintenance.
I appreciate that explanation of where it's coming from and that it's nothing. I guess my first thought was to say, oh, okay, was there something we need to be addressing more uh broadly? But it's just basic orders that come across and things costing a little more. Thank you for that. Gets us to agenda, excuse me, budget amendment number twenty-four.
Okay, that's me. How are you guys? So this has been approved um through the State Department, this is federal funds with IDEA preschool. And so what you'll see is just a movement between seventy-one, two hundred and seventy-two, two twenty. So needing to buy technology for those preschool students and not curriculum, so that's what the request to move is.
And I think um this will be for future discussion, but we may need to broach this topic in um May. I think one of the challenges especially that we faced uh this past year and we, y'all have started laughing at it when we say, oh, we've got to change to the federal preschool account. We have added thirty-two, fifty-four and it's a, a, a change in thirty dollars to that account and every. and it's, uh, a, a change in thirty dollars to that account, and every time that we're getting these notifications from the Department of Education approving these, um, the boards can pass a resolution, uh, so it's something that we may need to discuss to approve that on the front end, and then, uh, on the back end of these small, minor adjustments, so there are options we have, so we're not having to bring every single time the department is coming with these federal, in the federal programs budgets, changes, but I think that's a future discussion for us.
Pedro Lee, I think that's nice and clean, I think it says a lot about the back and forth, and, um, you know, small scope of it a lot of times, but from a standpoint of recording it, it might be helpful to do it that way, so thank you for considering that.
Just to prime the pump, say, oh, no, that may be a future discussion for us when we're looking at those federal acc- federal accounts, that the department is telling us, uh, giving us notification that you have this increased allotment, or you've got to change this percentage, it's a constant change that we're getting from them.
That makes, yeah, we'll submit a change, wait a couple weeks, then we wait even longer, 'cause then we'd have to bring it in front of you guys, so,
um, it does kind of delay if you are trying to make changes quite a long bit, so thank you for considering that.
That helps you, and it makes it cleaner, we look forward to you all bringing that to us.
Ms. Huffman won't spend more of her own time than she's getting for, out of it.
A huge amount of money.
Yes.
Um, if no further discussion, uh, gets us over to, um, budget amendment number twenty-five.
This is a request, uh, for the board to move one million dollars from our reserve into our coverage of health and medical care claims account. Um, this was discussed during the budget work session as well, but right now, we're, we have in that account roughly, oh, a little over five hundred thousand dollars remaining to pay claims, we're averaging a little over five hundred thousand dollars a month, and we have about three months left in this fiscal year. Uh, so we, we got hit pretty hard on claims, as the board is aware, we're self-insured, so anytime one of our employees goes to the doctor, fills prescriptions, we're paying those invoices, those invoice voices come in, Lucen is our third-party provider that, uh, that, uh, administrates the plan, but we got hit pretty hard on claims, so as Mr. Manuel mentioned during the budget work session, we're looking at that additional eight hundred thousand dollar investment in the general fund to cover claims for next year. We'll come with the other funds budget next month, it looks at how we're gonna strategically approach that, and then we're looking at adjustments to the plan itself as well, uh, to cover this, um, increase in, in health cost, uh, coverage and claims.
So, um, as, I know Mr. Jones always shares, here's our account, and, and we've been watching that drop, and, and we knew, uh, when we said, hey, we're going eleven years without a rate increase, that this was coming, so, uh, we know as we get ready to develop this budget, that we're gonna look at how we can provide the multiple funds to do this, so that next year, we're not doing the same game of, hey, let's move to, to make it to the end of the year, uh, we wanna make sure we're budgeting appropriately.
Thank you for the explanation, and that, uh, it's one of those, it's a moving target year to year, so there's been years where, um, the impact hasn't been as much as the budget, and then we've been really balanced right on some years, and this one, we, uh, we will certainly look at addressing. Um, agen- excuse me, I keep wanting to say the agenda, the amendment, uh, number twenty-six.
I think I will defer to Ms. Abel on this one for the C T E Perkins Basic Budget Amendment.
Good afternoon.
Hello, welcome.
The budget amendment number twenty-six, C T E Perkins Basic, to pull funds from various accounts to load those into our vocational instructional equipment account. As you can see in the description, uh, to purchase additional and upgraded equipment for STEM integration through project-based learning, so that's been one of the big pushes this year, we've had some training, we realize we need some more drones, tools, machinery, and computers. Happy to answer any questions.
Again, this is just a movement.
Yes.
Okay. More drones, have to more drones? I have one in the STEM drone class right now.
Specifically, we're looking for drones that are repairable, because they do get damaged quite often, uh, we have found some that are easy to repair in-house.
The things you learn along the way, thank you. Any questions, any discussion, uh, on the budget amendments? Okay. Well, now we're gonna get to go to, um, agenda item number three, approval of science textbook adoption committee recommendations. Ms. Abel.
All right, as we shared earlier, when we were talking through the budget, um, this is our year for science textbook adoption to be implemented in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year for eight years. Um, and so you have, um, some documents in front of you, one of which is a chart that has links, which I will share this electronically, so you can click on the links, but the very top link tells the sched- they call it the schedule with the Tennessee Department of Education, um, where they release each cycle for all the content areas, and so by looking at that link, that's actually your third page, which shows you, this year we're doing science, next year we'll be doing P E wellness, along with C T E, advanced manufacturing, and, um, I T courses, and you can see the progression all the way through the year twenty thirty-four. Um, so we're focusing on science textbook adoption, and just wanna give you a little bit of background about the work that's been done, so, uh, we have, uh, the committee consisted of ten teachers, we had five elementary teachers, two middle, and three high school, and three parents. We had eleven parents who applied to serve on our committee, and we narrowed it down using a rubric to our, to our three parents who served. With a big shout-out to our extraordinary committee members, they meticulously reviewed all the components of multiple programs, collected, analyzed, and synthesized feedback, and tirelessly advocated for the future of science education, uh, for G M S D students and teachers. The adoption committee is recommending the following publishers and titles to the Board of Education today. We have for K through five, McGraw-Hill Tennessee Science, and for grades six through eight, Savas Elevate Science. And I do wanna give a little bit of background work about how those two came about, and then I'll explain the high school adoption. Um, so the committee strongly considered alignment for K through eight, so they were hoping to do the same publisher all the way through K through eight, I know some of the feedback that we've received in our listening sess- sessions through the town, through the, um, strategic planning sessions, is that we want simplicity of platforms for parents and students and teachers. Um, and so they were trying to go with one publisher all around, but, uh, looking at it, McGraw-Hill provides the appropriate Lexile levels for K through five, they provide leveled readers for each module, so we went with McGraw-Hill for elementary for the literacy component.
Can you explain Lexile levels real quick?
Lexile levels, yes, indicate, um, the ability, the, the reading ability of a student. We typically can associate it with grade levels, but it's separate, independent of that, um, and so we can assign appropriate texts based on a student's current reading ability. And also it had multiple pacing options to allow science to, you know, in K through two, when they're trying to embed science, um, they wanna also hit their literacy standards at the same time, so McGraw-Hill hit all of those components. And then Savas for the middle school, um, was a little more rigor as far as reading, and so the science teachers were very passionate about having those technical reading skills, the content-rich text, applications, a lot of data analysis, um, it caters more with age-appropriate simulations, demonstrations, and also, not that we looked just at this, but the T cap preparation for grades three through five, McGraw-Hill had a better-aligned T cap prep, and then Savas had a better six-through-eight T cap prep. So all made sense when the committee came together to go with those two particular publishers. And then moving into the high school committee, they are still reviewing, um, and I have a rationale for that as well, because, um, the high school science textbooks are very specific and very technical, and they just need more time. Um, they wanna make a good decision for an eight-year adoption period, so, uh, we said, okay, we can give you a few more days to make your final choices. Um, they, we also are a month behind with math textbook adoption that we did last year, because the snow days, we had a whole month delay on the caravan where the publishers come and bring the materials, so we were like, okay, we'll give you a few more days here, um, and there, also, the, the three publishers they narrowed it down to are very, very similar. So now it's just a matter of digging through, what are the resources that we get with it, what are the other components, so we will have that finalized by Thursday, and we'll share it, you know, uploaded before the board meeting for your review. And within that, it has the links to the books also, the public review links, so this document, you'll be able to click on the links, and you can see the review sites for those textbooks. And you may have noticed the term textbooks, and H Q I M are pretty much used simultaneously, H Q I M is our high-quality instructional materials. I think textbooks is becoming somewhat outdated, because it's just, it's not just a book, it's instructional materials. So H Q I M is basically how the state will refer to a lot of our textbooks. But they did shift, uh, like I said, from an eight, from a six-year cycle to eight-year adoption cycles, and we want to be very intentional about what we're selecting. So with all of that information, um, I would like to bring, um, to the, to the board meeting, all, um, recommendations for the adoption for K through five, six through eight, nine through twelve, along with the quotes for the purchase, so that we can move forward with purchasing those as soon as possible, so the teachers can get them hopefully by early July, which they like to get before school starts, um, so they can have those resources. So I'm happy to take any questions.
I, I think that this was discussed at another time, um, just maybe in a strategic plan conversation, but since this was a recent, what do we call on this, um, adoption, where we made it public to the community, had, did we get good response to that, um, a lot of participants?
We had three participants, and they, they did take time to look through and provide some feedback.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I was one of those participants, and, uh, I gotta say, it, I, now, granted, I have not taken a science class since I was a senior in high school, but, uh, all the materials looked, you know, from, from my quick review, I mean, really good quality, and I was, I was impressed just by kinda how much more engaging they seemed for, uh, students, you know, uh, than they were, I guess, when I was a student, which is, I mean, just lots of, you know, I don't know, intera- yeah, interactive type, uh, spaces in the books, just, you know, getting students interested in the thing, so, uh, I really appreciated it, I thought it was great.
And, and I will share again, 'cause I think it's always important to say, we're choosing from a menu that the state textbook commission selects for us, and then as a district, we're able to choose from that list, we're just not going out and, and finding, uh, textbooks that we want, this is coming from, from their list.
And their list was very short this year, um, and there is, like we, like I said, a lot of alignment between all of them, and the big, I shared the newsletter that the science committee, um, worked with, and the three instructional shifts, as you were speaking to, uh, board member strain, that they identify as, they are truly acting as scientists, there's a lot of coherence across the grade levels, and then, of course, multi-dimensional approach to science, interactive, much, a lot of hands-on.
I had one question, I mean, you know, an eight-year adoption period seems pretty long to me, I mean, I'm assuming that's a, that's a change in the states.
It is a change in the state, which is why I wanted to include the adoption cycle, that last page that you have, uh, because next year, we are going to be going to what we're calling a gap year for E L A and social studies, because when the state went from a six-year to an eight-year cycle, that definitely had a fiscal impact, and that we have a two-year, two-year lull, where, you know, publishers only had to guarantee those prices for six years, most publishers are extending it for two more years, but still, we're having to go ahead and pay for that on top of another adoption cycle, so it has some repercussions.
Uh, do you know what the, their reasoning was for extending the adoption period?
They also moved the standards revision to eight-year cycles, and so they wanted to line up with the academic standards revisions for those courses.
Okay. Just a lot of developments and subjects in eight years.
Exactly, that's a long period.
So you've got the note there, and I think for science, you probably have more A Ps than any other discipline. So I know that, 'cause I think there's an A P, there's definitely an A P for the four, and then there's the dual enrollment, but there's also the C T E of the A and P. So for like A P biology and A P chemistry, A P physics and, and A P's, how, I know that, that's not part of it, but as far as alignment for the books, especially when you, when you have teachers teaching both, um, so what's the thought process, and, and how does that work, just in general, 'cause I think we didn't really have this for math, but I think for science, it's, it's, it's more pronounced.
We do have more A P and dual enrollment courses in science than we do in math, yes, and the, the teachers are also going to look at those, the college board makes a strong recommendation as to the text that they should use. And as far as alignment with, like, let's say standard physics going into A P physics, it should align well, because the college board standards are going to be close to Tennessee state standards for science, but.
Okay, so, yeah, but like the publisher, so they'll decide, I, I guess, like for A P biology, will you come back at some point with, with, um, a budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so once we have that list finalized, which is just provided from the college board, it's not the state that provides that list, we'll come back with those for you to see which books they're going with for dual, dual enrollment and A P courses, we have dual enrollment and A P in all of those, except for physics and human anatomy and physiology, we have dual enrollment, um, biology, dual enrollment chemistry, we also have A P physics one and A P physics two that we offer.
So like the dual enrollment, though, that's more aligned, uh, through the U of M, right?
Exactly, they pick the text.
And the parents would pay for the materials, as far as, but for the A P courses, those, I guess, are gonna be from us.
We will purchase.
Yeah, I, I just wasn't sure, like, how the, yeah, 'cause like I said, there's, there's four distinct ones there, uh, A P biology, so it is possible that we would have, um, a McGraw-Hill biology, but maybe not, maybe for A P, it might be something that's based on the college board.
Yes, that's true. Same way with math.
Are there any other questions, or any further discussion, or is there any further discussion at this time regarding, regarding the presentation of the science textbook adoption committee recommendations? As always, I think, uh, those that took the time to participate in this, i- I mean, especially when you're talking about an investment that the teachers will make in the, um, learning, preparing, and, you know, to have them serve, uh, in addition to parents, just to really, I know it's a small list that we get to choose from, but what makes the most sense, you know, for, especially that, uh, kinda graduation, uh, I appreciate this, when we went through this recently with the math, understanding, you know, the needs to be with the standards at the elementary level versus the middle school level, and why this particular one is, you know, maybe a little more aligned than, than the other. Um, and so, you know, a lot of time and effort goes into this, and it is certainly a significant investment, so I appreciate everyone that participated.
Thank you for recognizing the time and effort, and I do wanna give a shout-out to Jenny Ledford, our math supervisor, math and science supervisor, and Ethan Constant, our high school science supervisor, for organizing all the committees, doing all the grunt work, getting the materials out, um, so an outstanding job by our supervisors and our committee members.
Yeah, I'm sure that's a slog going through all of these, but, um, if, uh, the preview links we have here, are those for anyone who wanted to use them, okay, so.
Yes, there is a, it's a public site on the State Department page, and when this is uploaded, you'll be able to just click on those links.
Okay, so if any, if any parents wanted to, they could, okay, sounds good.
I think they keep them active until the fall of next year, and then they'll shut them.
Well, seeing no further discussion on agenda item number three, thank you so much, Ms. Abel. Um, agenda item number four is further business, at which point in time I think we're going to, uh, discuss adding something to discuss, how about that?
Yes, so we do have some further business, uh, that we wanna bring before the board for approval, um, at our business meeting next week. Uh, we have now received a contract, uh, or proposed contract from A two H, uh, for their work at Farmington Elementary School to remove the modulars. Um, so we have that contract, and we want to make sure, we wanna get, provide that to you and, and have y'all, uh, look at that, so it can be for your consideration at the next business meeting, so, Mr. Kathy, I don't know if you wanna describe details or anything about that.
It's a, it's a design, or a proposal for design, uh, engineering and architecture services for the addition. Um, the, we're targeting, or at least trying to target, uh, starting construction in the spring of twenty twenty-six, and in order to do that, um, we have to go through the fun field trip slash gauntlet of approval processes, and in order to do that, we need to get an architecture and engineering firm under contract to start design. Once we start design, we will have to take a field trip through the design review commission with the city, the planning commission, board of zoning and appeals, we'll have to get approval from local and state fire marshal, as well as Shelby County code enforcement, and as we go through all those approval processes, once we get them and we get feedback, because sometimes, any of those bodies' feedback can change the
any of those bodies' feedback can change the design itself. Uh, they sometimes require us to put in additional road to get, be able to get a fire truck and, uh, within fifty feet of the furthest corner of the building. Um, so once we get all of the feedback and approvals from all those bodies, we go out to bid, and then we will be back to this board, uh, to ask for approval for a construction, uh, to award a, award the bid to a construction company, get under contract with them. And then after that, the fun part begins, we get to build it. So this is a first step in, in really getting down the road of doing the work to get, make this addition a reality.
Would we be removing the, uh, modulars in advance? Like, we'd make sure we had all the approvals first before we were, okay, before those were removed.
Yes, and that'll be, uh, that could possibly be a separate bid that has to come before this board for award, because there will have, we have the bid, we've put it out before, but we'll put it out again. Uh, there's actually a decent amount of work to be done to disconnect the modulars, the electrical plumbing connections, everything that needs, the work that needs to be done to get them ready for the modular company to come and just get. So we have to have that work done, then the haul off, then the construction begins. And then Farmington will have to find a way to have a temporary plan to make do while that space is not available.
So I guess as part of this process, I know when we went through the budget work session, we've got a rough idea. But if for some reason it comes back, I guess you'll, you'll be the, I guess you'll be the, the first point of contact. So if you see where it comes back, something well beyond what you've originally budgeted for, you're probably gonna go back and, and say, hey, you know, like if they come back and say, well, this is gonna be ten million. Well, obviously, we know that's not gonna work.
Yes, yeah.
And then you're, so you're gonna basically, you're gonna bring before us something pretty close to what we've discussed as far as the budget goes.
That's right, so as, as we go through these projects, of course, we know general square footage numbers. So you, you can do predictions based on what other projects are bidding right now, the price per square foot. So based on the size of the building, you can get a rough estimate of what you're doing. The other thing that we do too, when we bid out these projects, is we add bid alternates to these programs. Um, so we list all the things that we want done, but we know that if, if it does come in high, we can say, oh, we're gonna cut off this part of the building, or we wouldn't add this feature, uh, to stay within the budget. So we make sure that we include those alternates as part of our process.
And we have the option to, we, we cost estimate, value engineer throughout to try to bring the board a, a project that's pretty close within budget. But ultimately, on bid day, when the bids come in, it, it could be off. If that's the case, we have a few options. The board can decide, okay, it's only off by X, and we're okay with that. Or we can go back and value engineer it again. We don't have to award a bid when they come in, we can go back and, uh, value engineer it and go back out to bid and to try to get it within budget. So we have some options there to try to do it. I can tell this board that we have gotten numerous emails from suppliers, contractors about tariffs and how it may impact costs in the future. And so what that looks like, uh, almost a year from now, I think is anyone's guess. Uh, but we have, we have started, and I wanna thank this board for approving, uh, AMB construction to begin the Houston High Ceiling Tile and Grid as it did. If this board recalls, you agreed to a special called meeting, so we can get that approval underway. Well, we got a call from them literally a week after this board approved it saying, hey, we need to get the lighting submittal approved and get these ordered because there's gonna be a thirty-five, uh, percent tariff on those beginning April first. And we were able to just get that in under the gun before that tariff went into effect. So I just want this board to be aware that as that environment begins, it ma- it could have an impact on our construction costs and how we look at future projects. But we'll wait through those waters and do our best to bring the board, projects that are within budget or pretty close to it.
Based on, um, the description from Mr. Kathy and the ask of the superintendent, uh, does any board member have issue with adding, uh, this for consideration on the agenda for the business meeting? Okay, well, we will work towards that, um, as, uh, we prepare to publish the agenda for the upcoming meeting, Ms. Striehlinger. Thank you. Is there any other further business, um, this evening? Yeah, it's four thirty-four. Um, well, then, at four thirty-four PM, the GMSD Board of Education work session and budget work session is adjourned.